You are here, moving in our midst. I worship you, I worship you. You are here, working in this place. I worship you, I worship you. You are here, moving in our midst. I worship you, I worship you. You are here, working in this place. I worship you, I worship you. You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are. You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are. You are here, touching every heart. I worship you, I worship you. You are here, healing every heart. I worship you, I worship you. You are here, turning lives around. I worship you, I worship you. You are here, lending every hope. I worship you, I worship you. You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are. You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are. Even when I don't see it, you're working. Even when I don't feel it, you're working. Never stop, never stop working. Never stop, never stop working. You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are. You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are. 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 You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are. You are way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are.
Very nice.
I'm gonna have to research that. Is that, is that words and music by those people? Is her name real, or that name, Milly Obrath?
She, she's African.
Obrath? Is that how you pronounce it, or do they say it?
I'm not sure, but I remember wasting time on.
That's interesting.
I just copied from Song Select, so I don't know. I probably didn't even read the.
I think her dad's a worship leader in church. I'm looking about that.
I'll have to look it up, that's interesting.
It's somewhere.
Number thirty-six.
Thirty-six?
Yep.
How about sit down?
It's like.
One off.
Close. That's good.
I have decided to follow Jesus. I have decided to follow Jesus. I have decided to follow Jesus. No turning back, no turning back. The world behind me, the cross before me. The world behind me, the cross before me. The world behind me, the cross before me. No turning back, no turning back. Though none go with me, still I will follow. Though none go with me, still I will follow. Though none go with me, still I will follow. No turning back, no turning back. No turning back, no turning back.
All right, Acts chapter thirteen. So the last time we were together, we talked about the call of Paul and Barnabas to go on this missionary journey. We looked at verses one through three, about how the Holy Spirit has called them and set them apart. And so the church at Antioch prays for them, sends them on their way. And so today, we're gonna read about their first stop. And I say that with air quotes, because as you'll see, it's not just one stop. It's, it's, this account covers a couple of weeks of activity. So if you will, there in Acts chapter thirteen, we're gonna read verses four through twelve. Follow along. So being sent out by the Holy Spirit, they went down to Seleucia. From there, they sailed to Cyprus. Arriving in Salmais, or Salamis, they proclaimed the word of God in the Jewish synagogues. They also had John as their assistant. When they had traveled the whole island as far as Paphos, they came across a sorcerer, a Jewish false prophet named Barjesus. He was with the pro-counsel, Sergius Paulus, an intelligent man. This man summoned Barnabas and Saul and wanted to hear the word of God. But Elamas, the sorcerer, that is the meaning of his name, opposed them and tried to turn the pro-counsel away from the faith. But Saul, also called Paul, filled with the Holy Spirit, stared straight at Elamas and said, "You are full of all kinds of deceit and trickery, you son of the devil, and enemy of all that is right. Won't you ever stop perverting the straight paths of the Lord? Now look, the Lord's hand is against you. You are going to be blind, and you will not see the sun for a time." Immediately, a mist and darkness fell on him, and he went around seeking someone to lead him by the hand. Then, when he saw what happened, the pro-counsel believed, because he was astonished at the teaching of the Lord. So first off, let's look at a map. If you've got a map in the back of your Bible, just get an idea of where we're talking about here. Most Bibles in the back will have some sort of map doing the missionary journeys of Paul. But when you look at the Mediterranean Sea, I've got this one here, the one that's in black and white, you can kind of see, it's the whole Mediterranean Sea. You can see Italy and all the way to Spain. And I'm gonna send another map around that kind of zooms in on this area, because they go from what would be modern-day Turkey over to the island of Cyprus. So it's, it's just right here in this little area. I'm gonna pass that around, you can kind of see where it is. So this is Italy. They are way over here, Cyprus. And these maps that I'm passing around are the current borders that you can see of, of today's location. So where Syria and Turkey are divided on these maps, at that time, that would have just been the Syrian province of Rome. So here's Zunbi, and then you see Cyprus right there. So they left Antioch, and they go to the port city, Seleucia, and then they travel across, and they come in on that eastern side of Cyprus, in Salamis. And then they travel, speaking in Jewish synagogues along the way, over to Paphos, which is on the western side of that island. And that's about a ninety-mile trek. And so that's why I said it in air quotes. This isn't really one stop. They're traveling along the way. And so let's put this in, now that you kind of know where it is, let's, let's give you a couple of points of context to help understand. In verse four, he reminds us, Luke reminds us, that they are being sent by the Holy Spirit. They're being guided by the Holy Spirit. So the work of the Holy Spirit in Paul's journeys is something very important to pick up on. I'm gonna talk about this more as we continue in the journeys. But take note of that right now, that the Holy Spirit plays a big role in Paul's journeys. Well, I'm gonna talk more about it later, but there, there's a couple of instances where, where Paul talks specifically about the Holy Spirit guiding or preventing him from going somewhere. Another point of context is, this is Barnabas's origin. This is his hometown. This is his island. Back in Acts chapter four, we're, we're introduced to Barnabas, and it says, "Joseph a Levite from Cyprus by birth, the one the apostles called Barnabas," which is translated "son of a tyrant." So Barnabas is from this place. He's, he's a Levite who was in Cyprus, born in Cyprus, and then was in Jerusalem. So take that, because that's gonna come up again. Also notice that there's a traveling companion with them, whose name is John. This is John Mark. If you'll remember, back in Acts chapter twelve, it was his mother's house that the church was meeting in to pray for Peter while he was in jail. And so the last verse of that chapter, in chapter twelve, tells us that John Mark joined Paul and Barnabas when they returned to Antioch. And so now, he is helping them on this missionary journey. He's their assistant. And so they went from synagogue to synagogue, preaching Jesus, working their way across the island. At this point, Paul is still focusing on the Jews first. And he spends this ninety-mile trek, not, probably not a super quick trek as he goes across the island, probably a week or two, or if not longer. And there's not a lot of detail given about the, the places that he stops. So we don't know exactly where he stopped along the way, and what the results were. But we do know that there was already some sort of Christian witness already on the island. Because if you go back in Acts chapter eleven, it says, "Now those who had been scattered as a result of the persecution that started because of Stephen made their way as far as Phoenicia, Cyprus, and Antioch, speaking the word to no one except Jews." So we know there were Jews on Cyprus, and then we know that there were Christians who came out of Jerusalem and went to Cyprus to preach the gospel. And then it says, "But there were some men of them, men from Cyprus and Cyrene, who came to Antioch and began speaking to the Gentiles also, proclaiming the good news about the Lord Jesus." So I already explained that Cyprus would have had more of the Roman influence, and so when they went to Antioch, they would have had a better understanding and an easier time bridging the difference to the Gentiles. So the Christians who, who had some background there. And then, one major event that leads Luke to record this particular stop, once they reach the far end of Cyprus in, in the city of Paphos, they come across a sorcerer who opposes the gospel. And for some reason, Luke considers this to be the most important part of their time on Cyprus, and so that's what we're gonna take a look at. That's what the majority of this covers. And so as we consider that interaction that, that Paul has with this sorcerer, I want you to notice that the, the opposition is ever-present. The pro-counsel had summoned Paul and Barnabas to him, because he wanted to hear their message. But as is always the case, there's an outside chirping that seeks to oppose the gospel and to turn people away. In this case, it was a man who was some kind of occultic, divination, paranormal leader. See, the Romans, and the Roman culture put a high value on omens, fortune-telling, mystical ideas, paganism. And as they were conquering the, the known world, they were picking up these little things here and there. And they had an affinity for the Jewish mystics. And so basically, they were interested in anything that gave them special insight, almost a form of gnosticism. And so this man had found a way to both make money and to have a power. And then he was influential on the pro-counsel. So he had found a way to take this and make it lucrative for himself and make himself powerful. And he opposed the gospel. It says that he tried to persuade or to turn the pro-counsel away from the faith in verse eight. You see, the gospel message was gonna mess up what he had going. And this is a very important factor for us as Christians to understand as we share our faith. The message of the gospel radically transforms lives. What do I mean by that? Well, let's consider someone who lives a life not knowing Christ, and they may be involved in some kind of sinful behavior as a regular part of their life, not knowing any difference. Let's take, for example, drug and alcohol abuse. Well, before we get to that, as they are maturing and as they get discipled, these behaviors are going to change, and that can cause problems for those that are around them. So let's look at drug and alcohol abuse. There's no quick fixes. Most of all, but great deal of complications that need to be worked out. Things like broken trust in relationships. You know, an addict has trouble with people trusting them. And if they become a Christian and they're working on that, there's gonna still be some of that lingering questions. There may be medical issues. Some drugs you don't come off of quick. Even with alcohol, there, there's, there's, depending on how bad they're addicted to it, there may be DTs and issues. There's probably financial issues with jobs and housing and food. There's gonna be their friends who say, "You forgot where you came from." There's a long list of things that are there. If you go to Nashville, how many of you have ever been to Nashville? Did you go see the Ryman Auditorium? You know where Ryman Auditorium got its name? There's a man named Thomas Ryman, who was an owner of several riverboats that were going up and down the river there. He also owned a few other businesses. But his main source of income, he made his fortune through alcohol, gambling, and other unsavory behavior on the riverboats. In May of eighteen eighty-five, a preacher had come to town, and he was doing these tent revivals, and thousands of people were getting saved. And it was starting to affect his business a little bit. So he was gonna go down there, and you can read this at the Ryman website, and you can read it in the, if you ever go tour Ryman, they show you this. He was gonna go down there with some guys, and they were gonna tell this preacher what for. Well, he heard the gospel, and God transformed him that night. Now, there's a bunch of legends that like, he went immediately down and poured all the booze out in the river. That's not true. He had, he had several boats. But what he did do, according to his daughter, is when the contracts that he had for the bar owners on the, on the boats came up, he did not renew them. And that made a lot of people mad, because people in the riverboats wanted to have a bar while they're, they're cruising the river. And so it didn't set well with some people. And by the way, the, the reason Ryman has that name is because this man used his fortune to build a church big enough to house the thousands of people, which is, when he died, they renamed that, that building that he built to house the people for that church, Ryman Auditorium. And so that was originally built as a church for the, the people of Nashville. But very interesting, but the story shows you that sometimes you mess up somebody's business when it comes to booze and gambling and things like that. They're not gonna like you very well. Let's take, for example, sexual sin. Premarital sex, cohabitation, same-sex marriages, porn. All of those types of things, moving from being sexually active to being celibate can be extremely tough for some people. And redefining those romantic relationships can be hard, especially right now in our culture, speaking so loudly at this. And these things are life-altering. So say, for example, you have a couple that's cohabitating. They're living together as if married, but they're not. One gets saved, and they don't wanna be in that type of relationship anymore. That's gonna cause problems, right? I know several preachers who've had to deal with somebody showing up, the, the significant other showing up and being really mad about this whole thing. So, you know, things like that. But there's also issues with legal issues now. What if it's a same-sex couple, and they realize the, the sin of what their, their relationship, but they've got legal contracts now that they've gotta navigate and get out of? There's all kinds of messiness that comes along with that. Then you consider greed and materialism. Think about the business world, a place of shrewd tactics and pushing the limits of morality in order to make money. By the way, moral and legal are two different things, right? So navigating that transition can be hard. I know one person personally, who owned several franchises of a restaurant chain with several business partners. And when he got saved, he said, "We're not, this isn't good. The way we're doing business is not right." And they ended up having to divide out a certain number of restaurants just for him, because he didn't wanna be in a partnership with them anymore because of the way they did business. That's complicated stuff. Religious practices. Obviously, if you consider moving from one religion to another, like Islam or Buddhism, there's gonna be major changes. But think of just the average person. Most people have some thought about higher power, but it's not defined, and they just kind of go with the culture. So things like horoscopes and superstitions are, are maybe big in their life, or, you know, were big in the past. Today, we're seeing an increase in, in pseudoscience and paganism and mysticism that's often called Christian, that most people just don't think about. You know, there, there's aspects of the culture that's just like a, like a, a current that's pulling people along, and they're not thinking much about it. But when you start thinking as a Christian, you've gotta start fighting against the current. You know, there's some good books. You know, one of the names that comes to mind is "Living Against the Grain", and how, you know, being a Christian with that current of culture is sometimes hard. So this is the area that Barjesus has influence. And I want you to notice that as he's thinking about this and these types of things, he, Paul, or Luke uses two words to describe him. Or, excuse me, Paul uses two words to describe him. And, no, I'm all mixed up here. So this, this area that Barjesus had, he had that influence. And the descriptive words that are used by Luke are "false prophet." So you notice that when, when they first come in, it says that he is a Jewish false prophet named Barjesus. And then a little bit later, they call him a sorcerer. And so that false prophet means that he is claiming to speak from God or for God, but he's not. The word "sorcerer" implies that he has some sort of supernatural powers or he's doing things that they don't understand. We were watching a movie today, and they had a really good line in there where, where they said, you know, "In times past, or even now, when, when something happens that people don't understand, they assume it's magic or supernatural." And so it's that type of thing. But this sorcerer knew that this message was gonna be a problem for him. As, as the gospel message leads people to change, they get their disciples, they mature their faith. Faith, opposition is steady, sometimes fierce. And this guy is an example, because he knew that this would be a problem for him, and so he opposed it. This is not the last opposition that we see like this for Paul. And so that's, I want you to just know that there's, there's constant opposition. The Christian message is not hated without cause. When somebody becomes a Christian, and it radically transforms their lives, some people are gonna be pretty upset about that. And so the opposition is always there. And so when Luke is describing this man, he talks about him being a false prophet. He talks about him being a sorcerer. That's what his name means. And so he is opposing them. But then there's this interesting intervention. In verse nine, it starts with Saul, also called Paul. So there we get the transition. From this point forward, most of the time, Luke is gonna refer to him as Paul. But he's talking about the same person. This is Saul that was holding the coats of the stoning of Stephen. This is Saul who went to Tarsus. This is Saul whom taught in Antioch. This is the Saul that got saved on the road to Damascus. It's the same Saul, but he's also called Paul, and that's who we're referring to here. And he confronts this sorcerer. So under the direction of the Holy Spirit, it says, "He was filled with the Holy Spirit." He confronts Barjesus. And his confrontation both rebukes him and punishes him and judges him. So he rebukes him and judges him. First off, we see that there was a direct address to his activities. That was a rebuke. Look at verse ten. And he said, this is Paul speaking, "You are full of all kinds of deceit and trickery, you son of the devil, and enemy of all that is right." Well, that was gentle, wasn't it? Paul just confronts it, and he says, "You are full of deceit and trickery, you son of the devil." Deceit and trickery, that was used to pervert the truth of God. I love how after he calls him "enemy of all that is right", he says, "Won't you ever stop perverting the straight paths of the Lord?" What does that mean? What is that? "Perverting the straight paths of the Lord." That means to corrupt it, to twist it, to manipulate it. They, they are taking something that, that, that is the message of God that's good, and he's twisting it, he's, he's changing it. Now, this man was a Jew. He had some information about the one true God. He, he had access to the truth in the Scriptures. Yet what he was using is what Paul warns about in Second, in Colossians two eight. He says, "Be careful that no one takes you captive through philosophy and empty deceit, based on human tradition, based on the elements of the world, rather than Christ." And so what this guy was doing was he was taking things that were true, maybe from Jewish scripture, maybe from just elements of the world, and he was using it to distort and corrupt the truth of God. He was being deceitful. He was tricking them, and he was perverting the straight paths of the Lord. You know, the human interest in mysteries and occultism and mysticism and miracles and such things makes us susceptible to the schemes of the devil. And the proper way to deal with this is directly addressing it with Scripture. Remember what Paul writes in Second Timothy three sixteen and seventeen. He says, "All Scripture is inspired by God and is profitable for teaching, for rebuking, for correcting, for training, and righteousness, so that the man of God may be complete, equipped for every good work." Luke doesn't go into the details, but I'm sure that after this happened, Paul went into the Scriptures and taught the pro-counsel and the people who were there the truth about who Jesus was. I could spend a lot of time here, but I'm gonna save that for a later encounter Paul has with another sorcerer. But we do see a rebuke. Paul calls him out. And then we see this judgment from God. Look at verse eleven. It picks up and it says, "Now look, the Lord's hand is against you. You are going to be blind, and you will see the sun for a time, will not see the sun for a time. And immediately, the mist and darkness fell on him, and he went around seeking someone to lead him by the." to lead him by the hand. Is it ironic to anybody else that Paul, who himself was blinded when he met Jesus, now blinds another man?" But this is symbolic of the man's spiritual blindness that he was already in, his groping in the darkness. Remember, this man was a Jew, a Jewish false prophet. He had access to the truth, but by ignoring the truth, he seeks to find meaning in something else. Like Romans chapter 1 says, "They traded the Creator for the creation." See, he's choosing these elements of the world instead of Christ. He's spiritually blind. And so in his blindness, he didn't seek God, instead, he's seeking ways to seek false and selfish ambitions. This is including what we see here. He had to deceive, trick, and take advantage of others, including the pro-council. You know, Paul mentions this type of behavior in 1 Timothy 6:3-5. It says, "If anyone teaches false doctrine and does not agree with the sound teaching of our Lord Jesus Christ, and with the teaching that promotes godliness, he is conceited and understands nothing. But he has an unhealthy interest in disputes and arguments over words. From these come envy, quarrel, slander, evil suspicions, and constant disagreement among peoples whose minds are depraved and deprived of truth..." Listen to this, "...who imagine that godliness is a way to material gain." What I'm doing here about bringing up all of these other letters of Paul is showing you how he came to this. These interactions helps him solidify how he argues against these things and the things that he sees. And at this point right here, he's already come across somebody who is twisting things, false doctrines, do not agree with sound teaching, they're arguing over every little thing, and they imagine this godliness as a way to material gain. By blinding him, Paul is simply making physical what is already true in his heart, because God will not be mocked. It may not be immediate like it is here, but consequences do come for those who pervert the truth of God for personal gains. They will face judgment. Prosperity preachers who use the name of Jesus to pad their pocketbooks will face judgment. But the immediate impact right here was indeed a miracle. This sign was a stamp of approval on the apostleship of Paul and Paul's message. The Jesus of Paul overpowers the deceit and trickery of Barjesus, and when he blinds him, that is a sign to those around him that what Paul is saying is trustworthy. And so this leads to the salvation of the pro-council, right? Amen. It says that he believed, but I want you to pay very special attention to verse 12. It says that, "When he saw what happened, the pro-council believed, because he was astonished at the miracle." No, what does it say? It says astonished at the teaching of the Lord. So it wasn't the miracle that was the defining moment. The miracle got his attention. It created the open door, and he goes, "Wait a minute, I definitely need to listen to this guy now." But it was the teaching that led to his salvation. The miracle gets the attention, but the teaching is what matters. So when you think about this particular story, why do you think it's included in this particular section? Why is this the one thing that Luke records about their time on Cyprus? Well, was it Paul's first miracle? We're unsure, but it's clearly the first recorded miracle that we have from Paul. I don't think that that necessarily means it was his first, because he didn't say this was his first miracle. But it is his first recorded miracle. Was this his first salvation? Was this the first person to respond positively to the message? I highly doubt it. Paul had been preaching across the island. There were other Christians there already. I'm sure there was some response in other areas. So why record this one? Well, there's some intriguing aspects to think about. This is the salvation of a Gentile. We've seen the gospel reaching the Gentiles already. The church in Antioch was mostly Gentile, but Christianity was still mostly seen as a Jewish sect. And this event is one of the building blocks for Paul's movement from the Jews to the Gentiles. We see that with him being in Tarsus for so long, we see that with his work in Antioch. But this is another building block of how the Gentiles are open to the gospel. I'm going to continue to point that out, of the expansion of the gospel to the Gentiles, and how the Holy Spirit guided the movement of Christianity from a small group of people in Jerusalem to this major world movement. I mean, it's kind of a odd thing that this small group of people in Jerusalem, it ends up becoming a worldwide movement. But I think that's part of it. I think that also that you have to understand this is the salvation of a Roman official. Interactions with well-known, powerful, and important people tend to be recorded in history anyway. When you look at history, they talk about, you know, the political leaders, they talk about major people that were involved. You don't normally hear Jim Bob's story of, you know, World War II. You know, you hear about Churchill and stuff like that. And so this is kind of an important person. He is a pro-council, which means he is a Roman official over this little area. And so he had some persuasion when it came to the things that were happening there. And so this is one of those interactions, and I think that's part of reason that Luke records it. I think he records it because it included a sign. The opposition came from a heretical Jew, and the use of signs and wonders verified the messengers, as it has in times past in the Old Testament, and therefore, many people sought miracles. And this goes all the way back to the Egyptian sorcerers. If you'll remember, when Moses was commissioned by God to go and free the Israelite people, Moses said, "Well, who do I tell them sent me?" And God says, "You tell them 'I am that I am sent you.'" He's like, "Okay, well, how do I prove to the Pharaoh?" And so God gave him some things to do to prove that it was him. One of them was throwing his staff down on the ground, and it turned into a snake. Well, then the Egyptian sorcerers do the same thing. But you know what happened after that? Moses's snake eats the other snakes. But people look for signs and wonders. There's a human fascination with mysticism and supernatural that's very intense. However, I do want to point out that Luke doesn't record any signs and wonders from the journey across Cyprus. Now, my suggestion is that this was probably the first signs and wonder, therefore, it's worth noting. But this was not something that Paul did at every stop along the way. This was a unique situation. There wasn't always signs and wonders going along with him. But this one, it did include a sign, so it's worth noting. I also think that it's interesting to note that we're not told about a church that results from the work there. Many of the places that Paul has visited, or we will see Paul visit, end up having a local church. So he gets there, people start getting saved, he helps them organize and become a local church, right? And then he moves on. That's why he writes letters back to them, you know, the churches that he started in different places. But he doesn't say anything about a church here. We're not giving any of the details about churches on Cyprus. Part of that is primarily due to the fact that after Paul and Barnabas part company in Acts chapter 15, Barnabas and John Mark go back to Cyprus. Paul and Silas go north by land back to the other churches. So Paul and Silas don't go back that way, and Luke gets most of his information from Paul. So there wouldn't have been information about what was going on there in Cyprus. But I do find that interesting. But Luke did feel that it was important enough to note here that that's where they started. And so these points will be helpful as we look into the next event, because the next event that we're going to see is Paul, they go off of Cyprus and they go up into what's modern-day Turkey now, and they come across another Jewish synagogue, and Paul gives a pretty lengthy sermon to the Jewish people there. And then we're going to see what comes out of that. And so next week, we want to look at comparing and contrasting these two events. This event in Cyprus, which we see him working across there, there's a Gentile leader, and then we're going to see what happens there in Antioch of Pessida, the sermon that he has there, and what comes out of that. And so as we think about that, I want to leave you with a few questions to consider for next week. When you compare the Gentiles and the Jewish people that we specifically point out in this section and the next one, how does access to and some knowledge of the Word of God play into how we share the gospel? What I mean by that is if you meet somebody who has some Bible knowledge, but they're not a believer, does that change how you would interact with that person based on going somewhere with somebody who has absolutely no idea what the Bible is? How does that change? I think there's some interesting things that we can see between the Gentiles, who don't have very much information about the Bible or the Old Testament, and who God is, and the way He is, and His character, His motivations, versus the Jews who have all that stuff, and how Paul talks about that. So that's one thing to think about. Look at how Paul is different between the two. The second thing is, if you were to go on this journey, if we were to say, "Okay, the Holy Spirit has set you aside to go out on a journey, you are our missionary," what process or strategy would you have going into this? How would you attack the problem? What would be your strategy or your process of going through and thinking about how you're going to do that? This is very interesting. I'm going to tap back in after we think about that for a little bit. But look at the differences between Cyprus and Antioch-Pessida. And then the last one. This is very... What's the word I want to use? I don't know. But I want you to think about this as something that is very important to consider in light of the last two. When is it necessary to bow up? You know what I mean when I say bow up? We use it in law enforcement terms. If I went and confronted somebody and I'm having a tense conversation, when they bow up like they're ready to fight, when is it time to bow up? Paul bowed up right here. This guy was opposition, and he was trying to lead the pro-council away from the faith, and Paul steps up and says, "Listen here, deceitful, trickery, son of the devil." Paul bowed up. I mean, he was ready to go to war. When is it necessary for that? In light of these different things? Because one of the things that I find very interesting is Paul acts different in different settings. There's times when he doesn't bow up. There's times when he doesn't fight back, but there's times that he does. What's the difference? How do you know when it's right and when it's not to? And so as you think about those things as we prepare for next week, go ahead and pre-read the rest of... You don't need to read the rest of the chapter, but we're going to go up to... Yeah, go ahead and read the rest of the chapter. We're going to finish out that whole chapter as he's dealing with the Jews that are in that area. Because again, you're going to see opposition, but it's a different type of opposition. All right? All right, so with that, we will say goodnight to our online friends. We're so glad that you gathered with us, and we look forward to you joining us next week.